Call the October 29th, 2015 Dickinson County Commissioners Regular Meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval the agenda with the addition of authorizing one commissioner to authorize payroll next Thursday?
I move we approve the amended agenda.
I'll second it.
It's been moved to second in the discussion. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda, minutes of the October 22nd work session and regular meeting, wire payments of $135.68 and KDHE payments of $107,631.40.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second, it's been moved to second in the other discussion. Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Commissioners comments and committee reports. Before we do that, why did we take the opportunity to have the young people that are here stand, introduce themselves, tell us why you're here? We'll start in the back. They haven't grown a thing. What are you here for?
Our government project.
What do you hope to get out of it?
An A.
No prompting back there, no prompting. Oh, that's an A. Thank you.
I'm Madison Craig and I'm also here for our government project.
What do you expect to get out of this class today besides an A? Find out how little we do or how much we do.
How much you do.
Well, you won't find it today because our agenda is pretty short. Yes, sir.
Me, my name is Travis.
Travis.
Also here for a government project.
Travis.
Request. And I'm here for my government project and what I'm gonna get out of this, once this is done, I will be done with school.
Nice.
Well.
I'm gonna be a graduate.
I'm Zach Sports and this is also for my government class. And what I'm hoping to get out of this is a good grade and a credit. Close to graduating.
So now, part of your history project of this involves what as far as local government as well as state level and?
Federal, state.
Federal. And do you have an idea of what the importance is more at a local level, what that involves? Or are you hoping to find that out today more or?
I'll probably find it out more about today.
Well, I've got a pop quiz in for you. How much is the county government? How much do you spend, how much do we as our budget?
A lot, I don't know.
Well, everything is about seventeen million dollars. How many employees do you think we have?
North of two hundred.
No, about a hundred and thirty-five. How many elected officials are there?
Twenty.
North of five.
Well, there's five bodies. There's sheriff, county attorney, extra deeds. Someone help me here.
Clerk.
Clerk?
Clerk.
Not you guys.
Tracer.
I don't know the answer at all. And then there's three county commissioners.
We are elected also and so, like I say, every four years our term comes up. So we either run for another term or somebody else replaces us.
Or we could run and somebody could run against us.
That happens too.
So you're all represented, I assume, by Mr. Peterson here. You all live in the city of Abbling?
And you're represented by all of us, but my district is the city of Abbling. And of course, you see the banner with the cities on it. And those cities have individual city commissions. And so sometimes there's a little bit of overlapping of some things where we work together. But we also have all of the rural area is what a lot of our concern is. The impact on that, but we, but our revenue source through taxes is from the cities as well as the rural areas, so the entire Dickinson County.
So luckily, hopefully, or luckily you won't be here today when we're talking about roads and bridges because I don't think anybody realizes how much the county has for road and bridges. And we're a little different than Sling County. They have a, county takes care of all the roads. And in Dixon County, we have townships would take care of the bulk of the roads and stuff.
And if you find this really fascinating, you can come back next Thursday or the Thursday after.
Next Thursday, we won't be here.
We have to educate ourselves at our state meeting next week, but we do meet every Thursday without unnecessary conflict.
And Mr. Holland here is our county administrator, so he's in charge of the day-to-day operation of the administrative department. Each one of the elected officials has their own department.
We are one of the larger employers, or at least a fairly large employer. I mean, even though we don't have, you know, tremendous amount of people here, but, you know, sometimes there are job opportunities if someone wants to work on roads and bridges or there's, you know, some clerical things here. And then also, have you all registered to vote or are any of you eighteen?
I am.
This is the person you can see to register to vote. You know, it's a way to become involved.
And still free.
And then when you, yeah, and then when you do, you know, turn eighteen, you're, you can come down here to register to vote. You get your driver's license here to drive cars. So you've got your tags you'd get next door. Maybe your parents took care of some of that or someone did. Is that right? That's good.
I'm hiring twenty-five dollars for my tax.
Taxes and taxes.
You know, when you get out of school, you get into the real life of these things that you have to take care of yourself.
Thank you very much for being here. The rest of the session is probably about all you're gonna get out of it because we don't have much on the agenda today. Lynn, you wanna give your comments?
About the only thing, just coming up this next week, we won't be meeting on Thursday, next Thursday, because we're gonna be in attendance at the Kansas Association of Counties meetings. Those take place in Wichita. Since I serve on that board, we're actually having a board meeting and also a gathering the day before. So Monday, I'm going down there to Wichita for that. And the KAC actually picks up the room and the, you know, travel for that first day down there. And then I guess you all will be joining the next day. And other than I was at the Royals game last night, a lot of blue going on in Kansas and Missouri and the Kansas City area. So it's kind of an exciting time as far as baseball fans. That's it.
Thank you. Lauren?
Yeah, I had the pleasure this morning of eating breakfast at Rural Center School with the schoolchildren that were dressed up in Halloween costumes and quite creative the little kids were. And like I say, it was the big turnout of parents and anyway, like I say, the Halloween is a special time for children and just hope that they all remain safe this weekend.
Thank you. Our work session this morning, we had Chaney Smith, our emergency manager and corrector, gave us a department update and then had a demonstration of his, the new drone. We, well, I shouldn't say the new one. No, unma, oh, yes.
No, not the drone.
I'm sorry, I come from the military, there's still drones. Unmanned aircraft. What's the correct word?
Aerial camera.
Aerial camera.
Can you pull any of that up on the camera or the TVC I can see?
He took his flash drive with him, so yeah.
So that was.
But it's a remote, you know, type of aircraft and?
You probably have them.
Just east of the courthouse, he took it up in the air and took it up above the elevators and you get a panoramic view of what's going on, but? But he went over some, a lot of the uses of it that we could use for the county and sheriff's department and various things.
That was, well, and our, like Lynn has alluded to, we will be having a meeting next Thursday. We will be having on November eighteenth, doing interviews for our Justice Center project the week of the eighteenth and nineteenth. And then there's one to be determined later, we can work it in for another.
Hopefully we can do it to a safety.
Yeah, right, yeah. And then the twenty-fourth, we'll be attending the commissioners for its achievement banquet. Doug, you have anything for us?
No, I don't think so, thank you though.
Presentation of proclamations, petitions and other couple of comments being done. The reporter, our county officer, Brad, you wanna give your update?
Certainly, I've got several things to go through today and I'll cover that with a little bit of the benefit of the students. The first thing is if you remember back earlier this year, you all created Dickinson County Fire District Number Two, which is the fire district that encompasses the hope and the bar of response areas for fire protection. At that time, a portion of Jefferson Township, if you look at your pink tab sheet, I gave you a map, a portion of Jefferson and a portion of different townships were in question there. And I talked to Chad Larson, the fire chief of Hope, he's getting towards the tail end of getting the resolution or the petition signed that we would provide to Sling County. That area of Jefferson Township is part of Sling County District One. And so we're gonna ask Sling County, and hopefully it'll be simple, to release or detach that portion of that fire district from their fire district. And then immediately following that, we'll have another petition where we will petition you all to attach that portion to Dickinson County Fire District Number Two. So it will make a straight line up and down, it will follow a better response pattern and the appropriate taxes will go to the appropriate responders. The second half of that is the small area up in the western third of New Bern Township, which currently is in, it currently is responded to by Sling County District One. However, those six or those ten sections there that are hashed out, don't pay any property taxes for fire protection to anybody. And they were just never included back in the sixties, seventies and eighties when those changes were made. So they have fire protection in the way that Sling County One will do if fire gets in there, but they're not paying any taxes to them to help support that function feature. So I've talked to Diane, who's on the New Bern Township Board, and hopefully she and the other board members will help get the forty signatures that are required from the people who live in that area to get that petition done. Come to, we'll take it to Sling County and petition them to include that in the Sling County District Number One. So it's a little bit confusing, but as Barb can attest, it's been that way, we've been trying to do it for how many years to get it cleaned up? And hopefully we'll finally get it cleaned up and the appropriate people will be paying their property taxes for fire service to the appropriate jurisdictions providing that service. So right now, the thing that concerns me with the New Bern portion is if someone were to build a new house or change insurance companies and their insurance company checked to see who, who their fire department was or who they pay taxes to, and they find out that you really don't pay to anybody, then their ISO rating, their insurance rating would go right to the very top automatically instead of being what the fire district actually is, which that dictates what their insurance premiums are. So there's certainly a benefit to the citizens to get this cleaned up and we're working on that, to get that taken care of, so.
It's gonna be a pretty big fire district.
They do have a really big fire district. They have fire stations. There's one on Seventeen Hundred Avenue, you're probably aware of, and about the five hundred block there on the north side, which is what they call their Garfield Station. And then they've got one in Carlton in our, in our county, then they have Gipsel and Kip as well, so. And in the, on the Dickinson County Number Two side, we've of course got one in the bar and one at Hope, so. And if you remember the thesis that Sherri Massey did for her master's degree on GIS, she did it on fire districts' ISO ratings. And her research indicated that if we were to put an additional fire station over in New Bern Township somewhere, that that would greatly benefit the people of that region under insurance rates. It also dictated that up in Buckeye Township, in the Towage Fire District.
Yeah, one fifteen.
They do the same. And since then, they have, if you've been north on fifteen, they have one right up around twenty, twenty-six fifty, twenty-six hundred Avenue, two fifteen. So they've actually added one, taken the steps to do that to help their ISO rating, so. It's, that information, that research is certainly paying off, so. Last week, as you recall, Molly Beach was in and expressed concern over some issues that had happened on some personal property taxes that she and her husband John had been assessed, did a little research on that. And to make a long story short, what had happened was they had come in and registered a vehicle in 2013. At that time, the vehicles, the commercial vehicles were registered through the county treasurer and they were assessed personal property taxes on that. Shortly thereafter, the law kind changed a little bit, they brought in an exemption and the law changed in respect to, those vehicles were taken over by the state to be registered. They brought in the exemption form, we didn't get it exempted, so they didn't know those personal property taxes. The vehicle was deleted from the system, however, the system had already grabbed the tax amount and inserted it into the list of people who get assessed. We sent out the initial tax statement notice at the first of the following year, like we always do to them. And then we also sent out the two subsequent notices to them according to our records. She indicated that they didn't get them, we didn't get them returned out of the way they went, I had no idea. But the bottom line is, it did come out in the newspaper that they were delinquent on their personal property taxes, which was not correct. They were not delinquent. That was an error on our staff's part and we just didn't get that second half of the file deleted when it should have been, so. Just to straighten that out, they weren't delinquent and we have taken steps to keep that from happening again with anybody else. It was just an oversign on one of our staffers and the fact the computer was doing what it was told and we didn't catch it. So we've got it straightened out now and for their sake, we certainly apologize for any inconvenience, but the fact, their concern was that her name was in the papers being delinquent and they were not delinquent, so. I had provided you a copy of the, some succession planning strategies, you know, having been to KAC last year or two, we've heard a lot about succession planning, not only here but across the state, especially some of the state agencies like KDOT, they have a lot of maybe lawyers that are retiring or preparing to retire and the workforce, younger workforce is simply not there in a lot of instances. But I prepared this for my staff, for my toll departments and all the elected offices too, if they choose to use some of the information in that. But essentially what that does is highlights and prepares our managers for how to prepare to replace them or some of their key supervisors and some of the things to think about in the future, so that if we do have a retirement, be it whatever department, that we're not left holding the bag with someone that has absolutely no knowledge, nobody to lead the department, continue on because the function is meant to continue. So I give that to you today just for the purpose of reviewing it the next couple of weeks and then we can discuss it in a future work session, so. We had had, for some time, I've been working with Martin and John and we have done some research, historical research on accidents across the county, traffic accidents. I had Sherri and her personnel kind of do a map, well, and Russ Wilkins did, I don't know, did a lot of the work, so I want to give him the credit, a map just for the last two years on the number of traffic accidents. And I'll, I'll just give that to you, take a look at it. But with the, with the idea, we want to try and do what we can to prevent accidents. You know, we did the Safety Edge Program across the county a couple of years ago, which certainly increased the safety factor on Old Forty. But what this shows in the last two years, by the dots and the color of the dots, is where the highest concentration of accidents have been. And for our county, Old Forty obviously still the highest traveled road, daily traffic counts are the highest there. But Old Forty and Fair Road in that particular area still has the highest number of accidents for some reason. So in an effort to try to mitigate that a little bit or help that issue, we've, we've got our sign board, the county sign board that we use for different events. When it's idle and not being used, we're, we have it right now out in Old Forty and Fair Road, you probably saw it when you went out to the NCA, we use it every year to welcome them. But we changed the message on that, we put it out in that area that says, watch your speed, we are, drive safely, something to that effect. Might be just enough that it might draw the motorist's attention to make them stop and think that maybe they need to get a little bit more aware. We won't know for a long time, you know, whether that works or not, it helps, but it is one of those proactive measures, similar to the signs that the cities got here on Old Forty that flash and show you your speed. We figured if it helps, if it saves one accident, it's well worth it. But we'll be moving that around different areas and putting just some different messages on it, just in a proactive effort to try and make the roads a little bit safer, so. I did pass that on to the sheriff and he's, he was gonna pass it on to his deputies and if they're able to spend some time out in that area doing any specific traffic enforcement, that's even better yet, so. But I just wanted to give you the heads up, so if somebody asks you about the sign and that stuff, it's simply a proactive effort to make things a little bit safer, so. We talked to her about the Wilson Bridge Project, I won't want to that in much more detail unless you have any questions. In, under your red tab, you've got a sheet that talks about the transfer fee tonnage assessments. In Dickinson County, we don't have a landfill anymore, we have a transfer station, so all of our refuse goes out to the, to the transfer station on Jeep Road that's compacted and put in trucks and hauled to Perry, Kansas, and we pay HAM forties to do that. We charge, every household in the county gets charged an assessment on their property taxes of eighteen dollars. And then we also charge a per ton fee at the gate for people when they bring that material in. We've been notified by HAM quarries that we can expect to have a three percent increase on January one. Currently, we are paying forty-five dollars and thirty-six cents per hog ton plus a fuel surcharge. Whenever fuel's above two dollars a gallon diesel, we pay a fuel surcharge. And right now, it's a dollar twenty-three per ton, so we're paying forty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents per ton hauled out. It's costing us more than that right now to do that. What Randy and I discussed and what we've come up with with the three percent increase, we're putting our charge, our cost with HAMs at forty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents per hog ton. So what we would recommend is the first of the year, we increase our fees to forty-eight dollars a ton to compensate for that, so. So far this year, we've shipped out seven thousand eight hundred and one tons of refuges to Perry. And we've paid out three hundred sixty-three thousand five hundred and one dollars to HAMs to do that and the fuel surcharge of nine thousand six hundred dollars on top of that, so. Just to keep us even, we would need to increase that slightly. To allow the three refuse haulers and the county commercial haulers, the ability to put notices out in a timely fashion to their people if they're gonna have to pass that increase on, we would, we would like to do that as soon as possible to give them notice, so. I think we need to publish the, or at least put on the agenda the resolution for two weeks to deal with that. But if you, if you are under the consensus that that sounds okay, well, I could tell Randy that he can notify them that that's the plan and then that would, even though we passed the resolution in two weeks, it would take effect January one, so.
Any further? Lynn Laverne?
Yeah, I feel like we need to keep our costs kind of in line with what revenue we receive.
Yeah, it's not a money maker by any means, but we at least need to be getting out of what we're putting into it, so.
I guess my only concern is with the price of fuel, I don't understand why they feel like that they need to increase the fuel surcharge.
Well, the surcharge wouldn't go up, it's the base cost of the per ton.
Yeah, but I mean, from HAMs. From HAM's standpoint.
Yeah, you would think where fuel's down right now that that would.
You'd think that it would not, we would not be paying that kind of fuel charge to HAMs, but.
But if the contract, and I questioned that, and the contract says that if the price of diesel's over two dollars a gallon, then we pay a fuel charge to offset that, that difference. It did dip under two just slightly here a couple of months ago to where we didn't have a surcharge, but for the most part, their cost is now about two dollars, so.
Yeah, I bought some diesel from, and for farm use, it was a buck ninety, something like that.
Yeah, it was about one twenty-five.
Two, yeah, two twenty-nine or something like that for highway.
You know, they, they had that fuel charge on when it's four dollars and something, you know, and so now it doesn't matter if it's four dollars or two dollars and ten cents?
It's the same fuel charge, yeah.
When the dealer wants to get it on, it's hard to get it off.
Yeah. If it were dipped below two dollars, they're quick to drop it, but if it's above two dollars, then they're charging it, so. And I guess they think it all equals out over the long run, it's, I don't know.
Well, it doesn't quite equal out, four dollars and thirty, two dollars and ten cents.
Depends on how long it stays at that, you know. But as opposed to, you know, calling to their kitchen and wanting to pay more.
We have no control over it, so.
Yeah, well, that's true, so. Well, without any objection, that's what we're planning on and we'll have the resolution on the agenda in two weeks to deal with, so. The other thing on that one too is just, it provides you a comparison of what some of the surrounding counties charge for the same services and, you know, we're cheaper than some. And then you get some that are less, but Salina, for example, runs their own landfill, they're thirty-two dollars a ton, but they also contract with several other counties to take their materials, so I'm sure it helps bring their cost down that way. But they're not a transfer station, they're a landfill, so.
What does Marion and Morse do there?
Marion and Morse just charges a flat assessment. Marion eighty-one dollars per household and Morse does the sixty-four, and then they don't charge a gate fee, so.
Do they, they have transfer stations though, or are they landfills?
No, I believe they're transfer stations as well, but I'm not a hundred and ten percent sure of that, but I don't know, so. Randy, I'm sure could tell you, but I don't know.
What's kind of, do they do it that way?
Yeah, it's kind of a different flavor for each, you know, each county does it a little bit differently, so.
But you're looking at thirty-five hundred people in probably both counties?
Yeah, Marion County's not far off of the population of us, Morse County's.
Oh, Marion, yeah, that's right, yeah, Marion, yeah, Hillsborough.
Yeah, Morse County's about four thousand or so.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. I keep forgetting about Hillsborough and Tunder Falls.
Yeah, I think Marion County's right around eighteen, nineteen thousand, so. Uh, let's see, we did have a resignation of one of our paramedics in the MS department. John thinks he's got another person that had previously applied. It's actually a local person from the Chapman area, if he's gonna interview, might be able to fill that rather quickly, so. We talked in the work session about the current schedule and then Craig mentioned the Justice Center. As far as I know, that's where we're gonna be for right now unless something changes with the one company that we can accommodate, so. The last thing I had was we had, you know, when we were up at Ottawa County, we heard from Lincoln County on the benefits of putting some GPS equipment on their highway department and other vehicles. We'd actually researched that and we're putting some of those on ours as well because we think there's some tremendous benefit. And we got the first one on yesterday on one of the mowing tractors because it happened to be in the yard now to kind of show you a little bit here. Sherri has integrated that just within a couple of hours in GIS too, where, and this isn't on the public website yet, but this is similar to what we will see. And this is a live picture of where this mower, this mower number zero-nine is currently at as of eleven twenty-seven, three minutes ago, that, and where he has been the last hour. He started in, you know, he actually started down south of K-4 on Key Road and is going north, but the plan is that once we get these on the other vehicles, snow plows and the mowers, people can get on the website and tell where, Laverne, for example, if he wants to know when his road's gonna be opened up, if it snowed that night, he can go to the website and tell where the plows are currently at, where they've been in the last hour, and give you an idea when they're headed towards your house, when they'll be there, so. and give you an idea when they're headed towards your house and when they'll be there, so. Uh, same way with the mowers and, and there's a whole lot of other attributes that come with the benefits, but this is just the, the public aspect of what, what we may be able to create for the website, so.
That could be good or bad.
Hey, if you're on a county road, I, I'm usually plowed out in three days no matter what.
We also have, but we also plan to put the units on to five ambulances, uh, and there's a number of benefits to that.
It's a tremendous benefit there.
Yeah, uh, not only could, you know, when it was on a transfer and, and John wasn't aware they're gonna be back, he can look and see the live screen, not this screen, it's an, the company screen, it has a lot more benefit. Uh, and tell that they're just leaving the Wichita to peek and have an idea when they'll be back.
Yeah.
But we added another feature to those that plugs into the diagnostic board on the vehicle. And there's about fifty different things that it monitors so that if, uh, there's a problem with the air breather or you've got a, a fuel problem or some, something in the vehicle that's just not right, it will text or email, uh, John or Dave or even the mechanics and let them know that we need to check this truck because it's, the computer's saying that something's not just right. And a lot of those codes will come in that way before they ever show up as an check engine light on the vehicle, so. If we can catch some of those maintenance issues before they become an issue, it could save us a tremendous amount of money, so. Uh, we see a lot of benefits to, to it on both sides and the more we talk about it, the more things that we, we come up in our, our brainstorming that we can use it for monitoring fuel consumption. We can tell on, on that particular tractor, on the, on the software side, I can tell exactly when he turned the PTO on and off on the tractor. We can track where he went on a historical day and what his speed was and just all kinds of neat things, so. One of these days when we get all the units on, we'll be able to show you the real features and then I think you'll be impressed, so. But that's all I have for today, so.
Hey, Brad, uh, notices, communicate, notices and communications. Uh, we've got a invitation to Fort Riley. Fort Riley, according invites you and guests to attend the Operation Santa Claus ribbon cutting ceremony on Wednesday, the fourth of November. We'll be getting those by email now. Have an invitation to attend the Dixon County Conservation District Annual Bankers War Tour on Monday, November ninth. I will be attending, Lynn, you probably won't be, so we don't need to post that.
No, I got a doctor's appointment that morning.
Uh, I gotta thank you Lynn from the Eisner Foundation for attending our meeting, so, thank you Lynn. And then, uh, we got a K Works, uh, their business annual meeting, notification in our packet. Unfinished business, uh, notice, or interjects resolutions of having them, unfinished business, other business. We need to approve Lynn to sign the payroll and.
Yeah, I moved it. We, uh, authorized Lynn to sign payroll on, uh, next Thursday.
Second, any other discussion?
Clear as account payables also.
Accounts payable, yes.
Any other discussion, not all the favors say aye, aye, opposed, motion carried. Entertaining a motion to adjourn if there's anything else coming forward with the board.
Maybe the school wants to talk.
Oh, yes.
Otherwise, we're ready to finish.
Last time you got a camera.
We, we will sign your papers when you.
Yeah, you've been good.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah.
I'd move we adjourn.
Second.
Been moving to second, any discussions, not all the favors say aye, aye, opposed, motion carried. We stand adjourned.